Looks good.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey Marilyn.
Hi.
Are you here for public comment or are you just listening in?
Just listening in.
Okay. So we don't think we have anyone else out there, right?
Nope.
Okay. Then why don't we move on with the street naming?
Okay, so... I don't know that I included enough. A ton of information. So, the Marble Edge Lodge has a bunch of cabins. It used to have a main building and a bunch of cabins, but it has a bunch of cabins. There's been a few emergency access events there. And the cabins themselves aren't uniquely numbered. So I think there's been some issues with access to the correct cabin when there was a call for emergency services. And one way or another, this got back to the state and now the state is requiring all the cabins to have unique E911 addresses, which also means that the, basically the driveway needs to have a road name. So Tyler, Art's only administrator, has been in touch with the owners of the property because it really only serves just the one, you know, the one parcel. And they've typically with our process, we ask for three name suggestions and then it's up to the board to kind of pick the one that they feel is appropriate and doesn't kind of conflict with other names that exist. And all three that they supplied don't really have any conflicts with any other road names that we have. Two of the three are kind of have a relationship with the Wilson House and Bill Wilson, which would be kind of interesting.
Drive seemed like an odd designation for the nature of the road.
It's a driveway.
And I think they ranked them in order Wilson Way, Chippy Way, and Griffiths Drive in the order that they are hoping to have them, one of the three potentially approved by the board.
I like Wilson Way the best personally.
Same.
Same.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we designate this road Wilson Way.
One second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Wilson Way it is.
Here's Liz.
Here I am. Hello.
So we've got the pay requisition.
Yep. This time we just kind of have the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
If you go down to the first, bottom of the first page, the requisition for this month is 204-094-34. And if you kind of, if you go up the sheet, you can see what that consists of in terms of the materials, progress, labor, all that stuff.
That was tough.
It's also on the next page.
Same with that.
Basically. The contract total this month.
Where does this end up at?
Oh, so the...
On both pages. Column B.
Oh, I see. I see.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is this period.
The original cell at the bottom, the 204-094.
Okay.
That's the number that they're asking for this month.
Okay, so make a motion to approve the payment of $204,094.34 for the town hall.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Vermont 250th anniversary resolution. I'm sorry.
So who sent this, Sammy? The state?
Yeah. In 2000, I don't know what it was.
What's that? No, this is for the state of Vermont, which is younger, if you know.
The new one, the new one that's coming up.
It's the 250th for the state.
For the state.
So it's a resolution that the state is 250 years old.
Right.
Basically, they're having town, they're asking towns to pass the resolution to recognize the 250th anniversary of the founding of the state of Vermont. Pretty controversial.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't like this type of discussion on that.
I just included their resolution. I didn't think that that was needed.
I think it's only 249.
We're going to deviate, so, and there are a host of other communities that have already passed it. I think a few dozen already.
Yeah.
So it's pretty politically.
So do we need a motion to adopt this resolution or do we just sign it?
Motion would be good.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 250th anniversary resolution.
Okay. One second.
And authorize Rob Jodi to sign it?
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
I'll second both of those.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Head of schedule.
Those are kind of tiny things.
Liz's turn. It's your turn. Housing committee update.
Housing committee update. So it is December 17th and we are at the end of 2024, which was the end of the second six-month extension of this housing committee being activated by the select board to look into various ideas and opportunities for diverse, some more housing indoors. And we have had a very great, we've had a really good committee. We've done a lot of work. We've looked at a lot of things. A cornerstone of this work has been that Enman and Kesselring were commissioned to do a full feasibility study for the property. And it just so happened that it appeared in our inboxes today. So this was, it was held up a little bit. We were expecting it over the summer. There were some things that held it up. And so it has just dropped today. I've not had a chance to look at it, but I'm really looking forward to looking at it. And what the committee has been doing while we've been waiting for this is just continuing to look into other aspects and issues in the very, very complicated and large landscape of what developing any kind of housing in any part of Vermont is. And I'm trying to think of since the last select board meeting, Dave McEnany and I went up to Burlington and attended a real estate conference. Rob can share about White and Burke, which is a real estate consulting firm up in, again, up in Burlington that we found out about that might end up being able to really consult us on some various aspects of what some options might be for Raptor Lane down the road of life. But I think that what the committee is looking forward to doing is to digging into this report and then working with the select board to figure out a great way to report out a town meeting, the work that we've done and some of the things that we've found out and determining some next steps from that. What have I left out, Henry?
I think you've covered it well. I mean, just that we need to re-up the committee.
Yep.
And I would recommend that we, you know, as long as the board approves as well, for just a year so that we don't have to...
For a year, yeah. I think that's a good suggestion.
We found it's really a long haul and it's certainly going to be another year. Really concrete stuff to look at.
It's also, it would be possible to, this would share with the select board or something, the draft of take that out. It'd be interesting to take a look.
Yep. Yeah, no, I'll send that out by the time tomorrow.
Have you read it, Rob?
Not all of it. I mean, just to, it basically kind of boils down the, you know, the concept, you know, design that they came up with and codifies a lot of the, you know, the bedroom unit counts and the soil, the water approach and all that stuff. Also calls out, you know, some of the items that need more information, which is like some of the natural resource, environmental stuff. And then additionally, just the planning around, you know, water, wastewater for the most part. But I think it's a pretty good document because it gives you a place to kind of start from. And then also has some connections to, you know, the next step, sort of recommending like an environmental review for rare, threatened, endangered plants in certain areas.
They did that already. Didn't we have that with the...
We did a big, a big review that...
Honeyfruit orchid.
Yeah, we did a review that happened to recognize that they were there, but we didn't, we didn't do a more super specific review of the areas that we might develop to see specifically if it's in that area. They just did a kind of larger review, found it in a couple spots, weren't really looking for it and then just denoted it that, hey, it's here and here. So one of the first things that needs to kind of get sleuthed out is, you know, in the developing, development areas that are shown on the map, you know, are there plant concerns in those areas? That's kind of the first, one of the first, you know, tasks that Enman is suggesting. And then they also have included some information related to, we had talked about it a couple meetings ago about, you know, potential preliminary design for some of the, some of the pods or the kind of neighborhoods that they've laid out in the concept. And they've given, you know, given you kind of a range of the cost there, but you know, if and when the town gets to that point, they'll have to kind of drill into it and see, you know, will it be more or will it be less? But they've given us at least a range so that we can start to kind of plan and budget. And that number's 175,000 to 250,000. And that's just basically for your kind of first level planning and design that gets you, I think their intent is that it gets quite a lot out there on the table, includes a lot of involvement with permitting folks, which is mostly the state. When you kind of like hone, hone back that design and end up with the final thing that you're going to take for permits, then you're pretty, you've done most of the work in the preliminary design process, basically. And then the other thing that we haven't talked about tonight that is, was talked about at the committee and Liz and David actually went to one of their kind of workshop seminars, which is the committee and the town, you know, is in need of a real estate advisor, kind of an expert in the field that understands, that has an understanding and experience with developing residential, commercial permitting in Vermont, understanding property values, understanding development patterns. And to try to get a, you know, an outside consulting opinion on, you know, the Raptor Lane is an asset and the committee's approach with the feasibility study and just to kind of kick the tires and say, hey, are we on the right track? Is this something that developers would find appealing? And also to kind of reflect on, you know, when should developers be brought into the process to give some opinions and comments so that the town doesn't get far along in a, in a design process and then find that it's not, you know, the design maybe isn't meeting the certain parts of the market. And White and Burke is willing to do that work. They've got a scope and fee and a consulting contract of, it's about 17 to, they got a range too, 17 to 23,000, I think. And, you know, I think that the feeling of the committee is that it's probably money well spent before you dive into a preliminary design if you get some outside feedback away from the committee, away from an engineering firm that was, you know, Enman did pretty much what we told them to do, which was to show us the peak kind of capacity of the property. Now it's, you know, it's a, it's a chance to run that information by a developer and say, is this on the right track?
Is there any, are there any grant funds available to support, you know, planning or housing project?
None that you would spend in the timeframe that we're kind of tracking on, unfortunately.
Do you have a sense of how we would pay for this?
Yeah, I would think potentially ARPA money, potentially is, we do have some small thousands of dollars in the, in the town budget related to just kind of Raptor Lane expense, like kind of like research kind of expense as we anticipated some of the studies and stuff. Those would be the two that I would suggest.
Actually seems like a great.
Rob, do you think...
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Rob, do you think it would be worth talking to Patrick at the ACCD about one of those planning grants?
Oh, we could try. I'm not sure.
They, you know, because of the fact that we're looking at building a very, you know, diverse community, the planning grants are quite, it's a different process, it's quicker.
Yeah, we could look at it.
And usually done by consensus. I'm happy to look at that with you and get in touch with him.
This, it does seem like a nice ARPA fund item, just sort of as a bridge into then, you know, as we're really talking about doing the design work, then we've really got to start to talk seriously about the option tax. Start to...
Yeah, and this, well, this is kind of...
Move into having something to present to people.
The idea with this consulting review is it's a chance to just pause for a second and go, are we on the right track? Before you get, you know, to where you're proposing something that maybe hasn't been completely vetted with the development community and maybe there's other opinions on the way, the way it could look and all that stuff.
I was thinking, you have, just having some professional input on it to present to the town when it's not just like something we're thinking about.
Well, and I think it, so, you know, if you get to, certainly like town meeting, you got the feasibility report. Not sure how much of the White and Burke stuff would be done by then. Probably a good portion of it, or at least they could give us some kind of a summary that you could kind of include that in the discussion so that you're showing that you're tracking along and you're, you know, taking advantage of all viewpoints as you're moving along with it.
Do you think that could be a nice rollout at town meeting time?
Yeah, I mean, in my first conversation with, with the principal at White and Burke, it was kind of like, you know, we had sent some of the information around the concept design and it was like, you know, I think his comment was, I'm not, I don't know that this is what the developer would want, you know, which I think is like, that to me was a bit of a red flag of, oh, okay, well, let's, let's make sure we figure out what that, what that is so that, you know, I think the hope of the committee and the town is that as much as feasible, that, you know, free market, parts of housing can be involved in this and make it make sense. So in that avenue, you've got to kind of consider, you know, what's needed from a development standpoint to make, to make things approachable and to help them pencil out. And then in the scope of the design cost and potentially the project, the consulting contract is kind of small compared to what, you know, what the overall larger scope would be.
So it looks like they're ready to go in December.
Yeah.
So I would move that we accept and approve their proposal.
I'll second that.
With the idea that we always have the ARPA funds as the way to pay for this.
Yep, and I'll get that information from Liz for the planning.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I also move that we renew the housing committee's authorization for until December 31st.
I'll second that.
2025.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the other, maybe last thing to mention, the committee's doing a pretty good job with what they're calling messaging, which is just trying to develop information that as this becomes maybe more real, where, you know, design is starting to be sought out and permits discussed and stuff like that, where there would be some out facing information that's available, like a pamphlet or like a rack card type thing that could be handed out and could have, maybe it leads back to the website and we've got information there that just kind of has an FAQs and tries to walk people through all the many questions like, you know, what's it going to cost? What's it going to mean? What is it, you know, all that, all that stuff. And I think we've done a pretty good job of outlining a lot of that and trying to address it, you know, in a way that is understandable, hopefully.
No, it's a good working document, but we've also talked as a committee about thinking about maybe having a few focus groups and trying to, you know, see what folks want answered as well. So this could really be a good living document that could help explain, explain the project and promote the project and, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's also appropriate that the board of selectmen see that document and even maybe approve it or somehow buy into it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I should, I should preface the whole discussion, Henry, is that I think the way the committee is tracking is that the committee is ultimately going to have the documents and then we'll write up probably a couple pages like, here's what the committee thinks on this whole thing. And here's, here's all the info and then that kind of goes over to the select board to, you know, review, approve.
Right, so that's what we had said.
Pursue all that, all that stuff. The kind of decision making gets left to the board.
Yes. And that's what we had said was that, you know, we would be creating a report at the end of the year that would be presented to the select board for their enjoyment and...
Consideration.
Consideration, yeah.
Consideration, exactly.
Monumental stuff going on in the world.
Anything else?
I'll send it for us.
You want the budget?
Yep. Updated memo with the actual correct dates and all that good stuff here.
So it says the actual year?
Looks like I was actually paying attention when I did it, so that's, because I was. So the fiscal 26 draft budget kind of background and info, I've tried to break out each department. The whole thing is kind of prefaced with a statement about reappraisal and tax rates and the anticipation that due to reappraisal, then they kind of increase the rates of the increase of the level of the grant list, regardless of the, there's a four to five percent increase in expense in the budget from year to year, but we still expect the town tax rate to probably actually go down a little bit because of the increase to the overall grant list. And I'm hoping for the January meeting that we would have a little more specific benchmarks for what the rate would actually be, like what the grant list is going to look like and what the rate would actually be. And I've just kind of given you a range.
So the appraisal will be pretty much done by June?
Not, so it'll be, it has to be done by the end of March. So, and then the stuff gets lodged April 1st and then that whole, you know, the whole grievance process starts in the spring and everybody gets a change of appraisal notice. So it'll be, you know, the work will be largely done, you know, by early, late, late winter, really. Like they're doing land value stuff now, which is one of the kind of big things that you start to do at the end. They've done most of the rural parts of the community, they're right, right now they're in basically Dorset Village and surrounds of Dorset Village for the most part. They kept that stuff just for the winter just because it's easier to get around. So they, you know, they should be, they're on track to be done on time. And then the stuff would get, the five, the new info would get lodged April 1st. Somewhere in May, everybody gets the notification that your value has changed. And then there's a, you know, a window to then, you know, if you want to, if you think it's low, high, right, wrong, whatever, you can set up an appointment. And then that will then, you know, those appointments start with the consulting firm and the assessor and then go off to the BCA and then if anything from there would go and then to the state. I think in Manchester, they were pretty successful with, I think that they had, I don't know, I think maybe 150 grievances at the, at the local level. And then I'm not, the, the number that hit the BCA, it certainly wasn't that, it wasn't 150, it was maybe a few dozen. It may have been less than that, I'm not sure. And then the, the amount that got to the state level was very small, I guess they may be a couple, which is pretty impressive because they're, I mean, it's signs of the times, right? Because the market is what the market is. And then also just, you know, I think a good job with just some messaging and getting information out to people. So that's kind of the track.
So they haven't been over to Dorset West Road yet though, right?
Oh, they're, they're on the...
Did my house there.
They're on the northern end of it, I believe.
Did my house the other day.
You're supposed to, you're supposed to a letter first or are they going to...
So you should, you should call them first.
Well, I got something like a month or two ago.
Yeah, you're going to get a letter in the mail.
A letter in the mail.
Like weeks in advance and then...
It looks hard.
Yeah. And then that's your prompt.
Knocked on the door the other day.
That's your prompt, when you get the letter, that's your prompt to call and if you don't call, then they're going to knock on the door.
They knock on the door. It was interesting, the spiel included the...
Do the outside.
The timing of, well, we then let them inside and jump around and meet outside. Then he also, as part of their spiel, it was consistent with the timing you were laying out as to when they'll be done. He kind of presented it as if, as, you know, their company is going to do some education sessions for community members to, to, you know, make sure that they have an opportunity to understand what the process is and then, you know, you'll bet on to the...
And the goal of those is try to, to try to lower the amount of grievances that you get so people can be educated about why the changes are coming and...
He threw out for a couple of communities, I think, I think he said, you know, Manchester's appraisal was roughly a 76% change. So kind of, I think, trying to manage expectations by throwing out, you know, he's, they said they, his company has done a few, at the other times they did Manchester and I think he said that percentage.
Does it sound right?
It sounds right. In our markets, not changing at all here. I mean, the houses are still going crazy.
I think it's slowing down a little bit.
There are many houses on the market.
No, but the prices that they're paying are still way...
And the values are, you know, at the state level, it's a three-year sales.
Who would have thought Allo's said Hills would be a million dollar neighborhood?
Well, one of the, one of the things that was a little odd though...
It was a New England municipal consulting.
One thing that was a little unusual, you know, you started trying to get into talking about CLA. And one of the problems, we, we all need to be aware that the legislature totally changed the way they did CLA, which basically didn't change anything, but it made it look like, you know, for, for school taxes. They, you'll end up with exactly the same number, but you're gonna have a higher tax rate and a lower amount that you're getting taxed on. So it makes it look like our tax rate is jumping up, but in, in reality, it's just they changed the way they calculated, but the end number is exactly the same as it was. So that's really gonna add to the confusion of our communities this year. And, you know, it's kind of tough for the school districts to figure out and communicate that.
It's hard to even understand it.
It's, you know, it was so hard before and the legislature presented as if we fix this problem. Didn't change anything, except made it more confusing because.
More confusing, yeah.
In that same vein, there actually are, just, we got some information today relative to Act sixty-eight, which is passed last year, which is basically a study to look at state, statewide reappraisal process. In my understanding is in the legislation that passed last year, there's now a requirement that towns have to reappraise every six years no matter what. The, the trigger for the CLA and COD is gone.
Really?
Yeah, and now they're, and so it's kind of, that's funny because it's kind of carted for the horse a little bit and they're saying you gotta do it every six years. And they're also talking about kind of a statewide reorganization of how reappraisals are done. And that they would be done probably more at like the regional level, it wouldn't be done town by town, yeah.
What would that work?
That they're gonna create, basically, they're, they're gonna look to, some of the recommendations.
This is gonna fix everything?
This is a report that's been submitted and they've, it's tracking along like they, you know, like it, they're gonna talk about implementing some of the recommendations in the report, because that's typically what they do. And they're talking about kind of district, assessment districts is what they call them. It would include multiple communities.
What's a committee in the legislature is this?
Uh, it's whatever, you know, whatever would kind of lord over PBR, property valuation. So, I don't know if that, I don't know, is it because it's taxes, is it ways and means or is it?
Probably, there's probably nothing for ways, making more money.
Yeah, it's predicated on, um.
They'll get, they'll get the assessed value money, or they'll get the money for having it done versus town.
So it's just, they're, I think the, one of the ideas is that they're gonna create some kind of a working group this year with obviously the probably league of cities and towns, clerks, listers, all this stuff, because they're basically, you know, if they shift the assessing process, you know, that's a big, it's a big change. And they're, in the document that they released today, it's, the timeline is like a, the changes would like go live by twenty thirty or something like that, I think was the timeframe, but a lot to, it's a lot to digest and understand and.
It'd be nice to understand what they're trying to accomplish.
Um, I think to keep values as high as possible, to be honest with you.
But I mean, if you're region wise, that's, that's really.
Possible.
That's a huge, that could have huge effect.
Well, it's, so there, it's gonna be.
Not a good, our regions are homogeneous.
Well, no, I think, so I think each town will still be, they'll still, they'll still stand alone with their, with their values. But it's just that the reappraisal process itself is going to be done at a larger, a larger scale.
Well, it's kind of like, you know, with the CLA, the, the big change they're making is.
To your point.
Instead of comparing just from town to town.
Between communities.
They're comparing each town to a statewide average CLA.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, how do you differ from the state average CLA, which is expected to be like seventy-two percent, so. So it ends up, what it, again, you end up with exactly the same numbers at the end of the day.
A big driver of this is communities are really, are struggling to find listers, struggling to find assessors because they feel that it's a part-time job, they don't wanna pay somebody to do a full-time job and and it's a little bit of the towns that have kind of created this themselves by, you know, maybe it's a small town and there really isn't enough or they don't, they don't value the position and they haven't invested in it. So it's kind of created a little bit of a, some towns are saying we can't find listers and assessors and it's like, well, you know, my belief is you haven't looked hard enough. And, you know, you, you have to restructure the way that you do stuff. We did that a few years ago and it's been successful, but, but other communities aren't. So it's kind of created this dialogue with both the communities and the state about, about, you know, trying to figure it out. Because when everybody gets, when the whole state triggers the requirements to reappraise, but nobody really can do it because of there's not enough vendors, there's not enough capacity, there's just not enough time in the day, that's what, another thing that's kind of caused them to look at trying to restructure it, so.
But they're not, but they, they restructure without thinking about actually solving any of the problems that we have normally.
No, I think it's, it's just a, it's a continuation of this.
We have a shortage of people, so let's just throw the system up in the air and see where it lands.
I think that's the, like, if you were to, say you did it at a county level, at the county level right now, you probably have got.
Because they're big county governments.
Well, no, if you just, yeah, right, so the towns individually, you know, you're gonna have, some towns are gonna have one assessor, some towns are gonna have three listers, some towns are gonna have an assessor and assistant. So maybe at the county level, you have a couple of other people doing the work.
Spread it across more efficient.
Well, so that, that's, that's what the state needs to be mindful of is you've got probably a couple dozen people doing the work in each county. Certainly more in the bigger counties and, you know, a regional entity is gonna have to find those humans, I mean, you're gonna have to.
But the towns aren't gonna be able to have any.
It's, the way it's kind of written is the towns are gonna pay for it, basically.
And they'll probably charge you based on your CLA and your grand, grand list value.
Thankfully, the language, the language in the report so far has been population and parcels numbers.
Oh, well, that's better.
Which would be, which would make sense, it'd be favorable. So, you know, smaller communities would pay less because there's less, less work involved.
Well, that's the way you made in your, in the year about the county tax levy.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll get to that here in a second. So I'll go through the stuff real quick, it just, you know, department by department. There's not a ton to, to talk about from here to there. I think it's, select board, there's legal expenses have gone down a little bit, so there's, we're kind of lowering those numbers a little bit. Town managers department, we're, it's a three percent increase from year to year. Just a footnote in there, it's wage changes and then the, the assistant, the admin assistant overage that you see typically, that, that is reimbursed through the contract with the, with the fire district. Town clerk stuff, so we have been successioning from Sandy to Jen. And hopefully next year we'll get six months of Sandy in a new building. And then Sandy will be hanging up her spurs.
Hanging up your stamp, right?
And so that is all kind of factored in here, that it's shifting kind of back to what, what we had previously, which was the main clerk and then a helper for, for vacations and stuff like that. And I think, I think Jen's doing a great job, I mean, I think she's, she's gonna be ready, she ran the election, you know, I think she's.
She did a great job.
Yeah, I think it's.
She did a great job.
It'll be a good, a good transition. And, yeah, and Sandy's gonna be busy.
We were audited and then we passed with fine colors.
Oh, great. That's great.
Yeah, they actually audited our ballots.
Oh, really?
Randomly.
Is, oh, randomly, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, so that's big.
So the other things to talk about, the treasurer and audit, we are gonna have to do a federal single audit. Which sounds scary, but it's not super complicated because it really is, relates to the FEMA funding that we got for the Shawnee Claire. Anytime you get seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand or more of federal dollars in a single year, you're supposed to have that chart of accounts basically audited by itself. And luckily for us, our existing accounting firm is great and flexible and they're gonna, they're gonna do it. They just did, last year we had to do one for the fire district, we'll have to do another one for the fire district this next, next year because of the, the water project and the grants and stuff. So this will be the first one the town's done, I think, ever. And it's, yeah, it's, just it costs a few thousand dollars more at the accounting level to have that done. The assessing department, we are factoring in funding to continue having resources to consult with NMC. Through, the, the contract includes the, you know, the reappraisal, but in kind of future years, you know, we're factoring in just some resources to have them available if we need them, when we're gonna need them. So it kind of, it gives us a placeholder of them, so when we, when we call and we'll have a contract and if we have specific properties that we need help with inspections with or just kind of like getting the housekeeping stuff for grand list at year end together, we'll have a consulting firm to help us with that, which is great. Planning and zoning, not a big change there, but this is where we put some of the short-term rental costs, there is ongoing annual costs related to the software. The town office stuff, it shows a decline. I've tried to figure out, you know, being pretty liberal with some of the allowances for maintenance, future maintenance and utilities and stuff like that for the new building to, because we don't really know until we get into it kind of what, what that looks like. I mean, the heat, in theory, is all electric, but it's super insulated, so it's, I have really no idea other than McClay did put some information together way back when, if you remember, in terms of the cost of, the cost of utilities. We used that, we actually added a little bit to it, so that there's a little bit extra, so hopefully that'll, that'll make sense and it'll work out. Public safety, larger increase here, we've held out a three percent increase for both fire departments. If you recall, their, their budgeting process is a little different than ours. And the Bennington County Sheriff, the contract rate is set to go up to eighty-two dollars an hour, starting in July, which would coincide with this budget here, so. And that's, it's gone, well, that's gone up a couple times the last couple of years, it was probably artificially low for, I would say, the last maybe two years that we were with Sheriff Schmidt. And I think that was just a product of him just not really wanting to change contracts, I guess, or, or ruffle feathers or, or anything. So now, I think the, the reality is there's, you know, there's not enough law enforcement officers. They're kind of pulled all over the place. I'm sorry?
Is it Gully or who is it?
Uh, the sheriff is James Gully, yep. And he's willing to come meet with the board and give a, you know, take questions, give feedback at any, any point about the contract or about how the the work is going or about this, this next budget year. What I factored in allows for kind of a continuation of what we typically do, which is kind of a, when you blend it all out, it ends up being forty to forty-five-ish hours a week. Some, some weeks it's forty, it's usually never less than forty and then some weeks it's fifty. Depending on if you, you know, like we, last couple of weeks, we had the Route thirty north stuff, so we, we added a little bit there. So for us to continue kind of doing the same level of service that we've been doing, it is a, if you look at the budget number under that contract, it does go up a bit. Amount, from one forty-five to one, a hundred and forty-five thousand to a hundred and seventy thousand. And that's at eighty-two dollars an hour. So that, and that, like I said, it's kind of, the last two years is kind of continuing to trend up and Sheriff Gully is basically saying he's, they, he got in there, spent it about a year trying to work through, you know, what he inherited. And then, you know, ultimately, to have officers, to hire officers, he felt like he's, he had to raise wages and that's where you have to start to change some of the, some of the contracts that you have and the contract amounts. Our contract is, is twelve months, so it's year to year.
How's that compare to other sheriff's departments?
I don't know, that's a good question. I could do a little bit of research on that. I don't know if we really have any other options for other sheriff's departments, but I can certainly stack up to, you know, other contracts.
Suggestive, but one day it's just helpful to know what the sheriff, you know, they're charging and stuff.
Yep, I can look into that for sure.
Do we split the fines? Do we get any of that money?
Yes, so we get, we get the money that, on town roads and then on state roads, we get some of it, but not all of it. Yeah, and we're, you know, I think we recently, there's been more, more ticketing, such, because of some of the complaints and reality. But traditionally, I know on our, on the town roads, there's not a ton of tickets that are written and that's a byproduct of, you know, I don't know that there's that much.
Yeah, we've got budgeted eighty-five hundred bucks for traffic fines.
Hear and cry a lot for speeding, but some of the anecdotal stuff that I get is that there's, we'll spend time on some of the back roads and it's not an issue.
Yeah, our actual, the actual receipts of traffic fines seems a little lower than we're budgeted.
For this, for, yeah, for last year or for this year?
For the last couple of years.
Yeah.
It's been. Budgeted ten thousand and didn't bring in much, this year budgeted eighty-five hundred.
Yeah, it's been kind of trending down. Yep, and that's a, that's one of those slippery slope things.
It's not a big revenue item, but.
Again, it can be if we all wanna partake in it.
Slip down that slope.
Yeah, and that's kind of the, you know, I, I think it's, it's, I, I, I know that we heard loud and clear the stuff from last ed meeting and.
Tips or.
Jason's.
You're right.
They've made a pretty concerted effort to try to sit Route thirty north in the mornings, early mornings. The last two Fridays, he's been out there five.
I like a lot of warnings being given.
Five thirty. No, yeah, so there's typically, that's typically, if you go back and look at the logs, I could, I could show you what, it's, it's like, you know, vast majority is, is warnings, probably eighty percent warnings and twenty percent tickets. And tickets typically are, you know, like some, I think last week, and this is where near Mr. McKinney's house on Route thirty north, somebody was going seventy.
Wow.
And a forty. And that's in that transitional, it used to be fifty, coming from tall flats, but still, but.
That's ridiculous.
But they, yeah, so they, obviously, they got caught up to, you know, a ticket, so. Actually, and I think.
That's a big ticket.
Arrested, I think, I think arrested because that, once you do that, then for the officer, it basically blows up the day and you're not, you're, you're arresting somebody. You're going and you're doing the stuff, you know, the paperwork, you don't get to just go back out and run radar, so it kind of, it kind of gets the day, but, but nonetheless.
Do you tell, Rob, do you know what time of day that?
That was in the morning, so he was sitting there five thirty to eight o'clock in the morning, yeah, so it was a morning commuter, I believe.
Yeah, that's what that, that Cliff was talking about.
So Cliff was correct. So we, we have it in the, in the schedule to continue that.
Jason, just curious, if, you know, since we had the whole debate over whether big trucks were coming barreling down, I don't know whether Jason.
I, I would have to ask him, I don't, I didn't hear anything specifically about that, I think it was.
I just, I noticed that, you know, I mean, because that seemed to be a great concern and was a little surprising to me, but I don't know.
I think that there.
Long truck.
The long truck.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of trucks, I think there's a large volume of trucks.
And they probably sound like they run fast.
Yep.
And you can hear it from a distance.
They're intimidating, they're, they're, they really are, when you're, when you're adjacent to the road and they come. When you're, when you're adjacent to the road and they come through, even if it's at forty, forty-five miles an hour, it's still.
And you feel it.
Yeah, you can, you notice, so. I think that that's the bigger issue and that's a difficult thing to, to tackle. There's not really much you can do other than just try to um slow the adjacent traffic down and, and change some of the patterns a little bit so that, you know, maybe they're slowing down a little bit outside of the area and then they're.
Right.
And they're not going quite as, quite as quick. Um, okay, so I will get some comps.
Feel free.
I'm the encroacher.
Feel free.
Other things I'll say is that um, the sheriff's department's been good about um getting, they get grants for governor's highway safety stuff. Um, and they've been trying to do some of that stuff and um, it's basically just radar patrol and um endorse it on like Sundays. So that's, that's good and that doesn't cost the town anything. Um, insurance, uh, I think the total across the board's about a nine percent increase. Um, split between employer, employee stills nine, ten and ninety. Um, and we're kind of unique that we, I mean, we're not that unique for months, kind of in the same, um, same thing. But we're, we have a full-time employees that are Medicare eligible as our spouses. So they, they get, I think we talked about this last year, they get transitioned off of the traditional um Blue Cross Blue Shield plan that everybody else is on, and then there, there's a supplemental plan. The town covers the supplemental plan, um, drug coverage, and then we also are trying to wrap around with HRA funding, which is just a health reimbursement account. And that's worked pretty well um this, this past year where we, I think we um, we covered the supplemental, uh, medical supplemental drug. Um, and then offered, I think it was twenty-five hundred dollars per person in HRA funds to try to cover any of the other out-of-pocket stuff, to try to get the plan that they're, the coverage that they're getting, to try to make that as close to the Blue Cross stuff that everybody else gets. And I think we did a pretty good job with that and we're gonna kind of continue the HRA um process. Nobody, I don't think anybody maxed that everything out, so I think the, the twenty-five hundred was a pretty good number.
Do you have a, some company helping you do any of that stuff or?
Blue Cross does all of it, actually, yeah.
Oh, great.
Yeah, they're, it's pretty, we're, yes, we're very fortunate that they, it's like turnkey, you just, a couple of forms and it's like, you know, they're, because it runs through them, they're able to just, as, as the expense toward the HRA is incurred, they just backfill us for it, basically.
Wow.
Which is a pretty.
That's great.
Yeah, it's a good benefit. And it's, and ultimately, the town actually with the Medicare eligible employees, we actually save money on versus a regular employee. So general services uh showing an eight percent increase there. Um, and there's stuff, this is where the town, uh, the county tax is, um, and I, there's a whole rant in here that I won't go into too much. Um, and that's where Sandy was getting with the um.
It's on my desk.
The county tax rate um is levied purely based on grand list. And you get into this dynamic where Dorset pays twelve percent of the uh county taxes in the county, but we represent five percent of the population. And then when you get into, well, what does the county actually do?
Yeah, that's a question.
Um, and what, what services does the county offer to the taxpayers of Dorset? It's Superior Court and um stuff like that, so it's, you know.
Not much.
It's down in Bennington, down in Bennington. So that's one for Sandy to, to work out. When you, when you add Manchester and Dorset combined, um, it's uh, that's even, it's even nuttier, like nuttier. Like Manchester pays more than Bennington does. Which just seems like, when, when one has a population of thirteen thousand and one has a population of forty-five hundred, it just seems like, well, that's, doesn't make any sense. But that's just the way it was, was written, so maybe we can advocate for a um statute change.
So that's by statute? That they do it by the grand.
And they get to use the equalized grand list. Like, and that's, that's the other, another gripe I have, the towns don't even get to use the equalized grand list for our own town stuff. Um, the, it's, that was a creature of the, of school funding. But in the, in the statute, they get to use the equalized grand list. And then, and that's the only way that they devy up, you know, it's so, just an example to, to belabor too much, but just that our solid waste alliance funding that we do, that we have, we've got an alliance, it's not really a large municipal entity, it's just a partnership of all the communities in the, in the county. And we just do a prorated, it's prorated based on um uh kind of consumption participation numbers, population. Um, and I, I don't think there's a grand list figure in there, I'm pretty sure, I think we thought to keep that out. But it's, it's um a more rational um calculation, basically, that kind of con, tries to contemplate what's a correlation to population and usage and what's paid.
But you also made that usage argument, you know, who actually uses the services.
Correct, yeah.
Provided.
Yeah, and that's, at that, at that level, it's easy because we can, we can quantify it and track it, so it's, it's fairly straightforward. But that would be the argument, would be to try to deviate from that. Budgeted appropriations, I think that we are, let's see, oh, uh, sorry, so um. Dorset Chamber, we're developing some um kind of a report for that um in terms of the economic development line, but I should have it the next, actually, probably before the next meeting. And, but the, the short of it is that like social media efforts and then the Chamber website impact, um, the way that they track the participation is that it's gone up um ten to twelve, ten to fifteen percent from year to year, which is really good. And the partnership, I think, continues to be a pretty good, um, a pretty good thing that, that paints Dorset in a, in a positive um light, which is, which is good. Highway, we talked a lot about this at the last meeting in terms of paving for next year. We are throwing the, the sixty-five thousand that's in the deficit for paving fund and retiring that over three years. And then that, when you do that, that increases the sinking fund number for FY twenty-six to one ninety. And then on voter-approved appropriations, I think everybody's gonna continue except for the Northshire Day School.
Are they dropping, dropping out entirely?
Dropping out entirely.
Are they doing that also in Manchester?
They are not, they are not, they are, um, they are only asking for money in Manchester.
That's really nice that they're, you know, hopefully they're doing well enough to.
You remember she was challenged.
Yes.
The last meeting.
Yeah. Oh, there's a payroll tax now that everybody that works pays. Employees people pays.
Right.
And there's, you know.
You're not supposed to go to them.
For the, yeah, there's, there was big legislation to try to provide additional funds to, you know, to go into. One thing I, I noticed that there's um VNA, it's still, but the same number, we didn't, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the num, yeah, the same number as last year, which was lower than the, the previous year.
That's one where they said they were gonna try to take a look at the overall and what they were getting from towns and.
Yeah.
Maybe we should remind them, although the, the head of it has just changed, I think.
Yeah, there's, there's so much, and they've also acquired Franklin County.
Yeah, it's, and, but the, but the amount they're getting from all the towns, you know, two things. One, it's actually very small in, in their overall scheme of things. But it really doesn't make sense right now because it's all, you know, it's got this historic.
It's just a.
It was the old, again, we're, we're, you know, we dropped it to thirty thousand, but Manchester gives ten.
Right.
And, you know, Bennington, we went through and we discussed it with them last year and they said, okay, yeah, it doesn't make any sense, we have to look at it and clearly they.
And Dorset's number, the, the forty was a holdover from.
Dorset, Dorset.
And that was specific to, there was people in town that suggested that number and not sure how, why.
It was a local.
But that was the number that they suggested.
And it's just gotten locked in, but.
I think we, you know, I don't know whether Henry and I should give him a call again or, or Rob or what.
Did you guys talk to him last year?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think it'd be good if you talked to him again because even if it is a new guy.
So I think the, the, you know, it's a new person in charge, but I think the fundraising person's the same person who, when we talk to the executive director and the, and the fundraising person, so we'll do, should I set that up?
So the next step is a public hearing at our next meeting?
It's a January meeting.
When is that?
Yeah, what is that date?
I got a feeling I'm not here.
It would be the twenty-first, or it will be.
Nope, do the fifteenth, the third, and then the third.
Fifteenth is a Wednesday.
Alright, so do the fourteenth, right? No, because the first is a Wednesday.
Right, exactly, so it's the twenty-first, Tuesday the twenty-first.
That's good, I'll be here.
Yeah, I'll be here too.
Yep, um, so the budget overall, plus or minus.
Oh, also I've got, is Neighbor Works is no longer.
Five percent increase.
On the list?
What, what?
Neighbor Works, so West Street, Marana.
What's Neighbor Works?
No longer in, on the uh, um, they, they provide a lot of, well, I think.
I don't remember that one.
Well, they're the guys that, um, did.
Housing, energy efficiency.
The energy, they. I mean, we always, we work with a lot from the Energy Committee because they provide a cheap.
Neighbor Works has never been one of ours.
Yeah, we.
No, yeah, I don't remember that name.
It was on last year.
It was uh Neighbor Works.
It was in the last month's.
Neighbor to neighbor was.
Budget, but it was a mis, it was a mistake, it shouldn't have been in there.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, oh, oh, was, yeah, that's right, it was in the la, last month's.
It was in the last month's chart of accounts, but it shouldn't have been in there because we, like Sandy said, I, I had it in there and then I think Nancy was like.
Okay.
We've never paid them.
They, they got a lot of money from the state.
We've never paid them anything and then when we looked at it, it was like, oh, no, we haven't, never paid them anything, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure how they, I think I, I must've just mistaken that name for somebody else.
Well, we got neighbor to neighbor too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you're, you know, if you're good with the um.
And rarely, I haven't seen too many petitions, so if they don't do petitions, they don't go on about.
Yeah, no, um.
There's a few going around town, I know, cemetery, library, historic.
Yep, and we sent out communication a couple of weeks ago about the reminder to do them, so.
And what's the date they have to be in by?
Sixteenth.
January sixteenth. And that's the same for select board?
Nope, select board is the twenty-fifth or something, twenty-fifth, okay.
Wait, you know how the select board is?
Um, you.
I'm up.
Didn't we decide that today?
I'm up.
Well, there's two one-years and then a three-year.
Two one-years, Henry and Liz and.
Jim is the three-year that's up.
So I've gotta get going, I guess.
And then Henry and Liz are the one-years.
I'll sign yours.
Thank you. I got one.
I should grab it to petition.
Do you have your petition here?
I don't.
Need to get one.
So you have to do a petition too. Okay, so what else on the budget?
That's it, unless you have edits that you wanna see or anything that, you know, I can certainly round out with more information for the public hearing on some of the, you know, larger items.
Do we need to vote?
Increases.
On having a public hearing?
Yeah.
I can do those petitions tomorrow and email them to you.
Agreed, thanks.
You're gonna do three again, you're gonna do one again or you're gonna flip?
I'm flexible, if somebody wants a bit different, I'm only committing one. It's one years or.
Yeah, exactly.
Hard to come by.
You, you're gonna need more than that, a bribe or something, Jim, to get them to.
Yep, if you guys are good with the budget, we could have a motion to send it to public hearing and we'll have, uh, make it available and be ready to answer questions and stuff. So moved?
Second.
Second.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm thinking of Tom Smith wanting to keep the, the mill rate under thirty cents.
Well, reappraisal's gonna do that for us potentially, so we'll see where we end up.
Help me please. It's very, Evan Beatty's everything, yeah.
Old business.
Old business, okay. Kind of a nice picture there of the uh.
Yeah.
The office, um, the trees to kind of background are, the green trees are all gonna go away. That's one of the, one of the edits, so I think if you recall, um, a while back, I reported that we went, we had an overage on the expense for the well. Then took them a couple of tries and I think it was about twenty thousand dollars or more than the estimate. And another, huh, um, you know, I don't know who, where you kind of lay the blame or whatever, but when, when the design was happening and when the engineering firm mapped out the um, the limits of disturbance for earthwork, in my opinion, they didn't, they didn't mark enough on the east side of the building. So if you go up there right now, you could kind of see what I'm, what I'm talking about, where there's, there's trees probably within fifteen feet of the building. And so we are um basically doing a change order to, to cut a bunch of those trees, stump, kind of, not so much regrade, but just get it um, just a little bit of a, more of a buffer, right? And it's not gonna be mowable grass or anything like that, it'll just be fescue, maybe get mowed once a year or something. But, but that adds another like thirty thousand to the, to the cost, so. And it's, you know, uh, but I, I don't see a way around it, to be honest with you, because I just, it's.
You don't want them that close.
Yeah, if, if those trees come down.
It's, you know, you got a three and a half million dollar building, you can't have trees within fifteen feet of it. And the aesthetic will, will improve greatly too, actually. So, but, and getting back to the timeline, we feel like they've been set back about four weeks and the finish date is, is end of July twenty twenty-five, which is still, you know, great. It's not slowing, it's certainly pretty, pretty fast, so. Um, my understanding is they should be um kind of enclosed with the building by um the end of the month. Which is good, cause then, then they'll start to be able to have the tradespeople and whatnot get in there and start to do their stuff and it'll be a little bit more Neil and Breen's control in terms of the workflow and time. And they, if there's time to be made up, they'll try to make it up. I think we talked, the Reid Farm Lane stuff, uh, we did have a, a big meeting with the state uh last month. Actually, yeah, it was after our last meeting, so we had a, kind of a close-out meeting, is what it's called, where the state comes down and makes. That was good.
Oh, good.
Um, and that's, you know, I think it's kind of. Which are able to get donated, um, and we also have to put a fence in.
Where's the fence gonna go?
The fence is supposed to go at the edge of the, and Frank could probably fix me if I'm wrong here, repair in.
Oh, sure.
Vegetation, something or other.
Yeah, they wanna keep.
Zone. We can't mow.
Buffer, basically, that we don't mow and let it grow naturally.
Oh, I see.
Even though on the other side of the fence is private property.
That gets mowed.
It's gonna get mowed.
That sounds about right.
So, uh, but they, you know, the two fifty permit doesn't cover their property.
Is it a split rail fence?
Yeah, we're just gonna put in a small, like a section of split rail, so it won't, it won't cost much money. And then, uh, we do have to kind of reseed um.
Yeah.
The, the area, we didn't, it was just a time of year.
It was too late in the year.
Yeah, too, too late in the year and then there was, there's a ton of gravel actually underneath that parking lot. So we're probably gonna have to blend in some topsoil and stuff. But we'll, we'll do, deal with it in the spring and then it'll look like it was never there. And the village traffic stuff, I think we kind of talked about, I sent another note to MSK today, actually, about the East Dorset stuff. And my general understanding is there should be opportunity, we're trying to potentially, if you recall, come up with some maybe like village design, like redesigned stuff and, and then try to take that to V-Trans and when they go to pave, we can say, you know, hey, can we, if we pay for a sidewalk, could we incorporate this in and narrow the road and do some other stuff? And so we're attempting to get a, an engineering firm to help us with that.
Tom, please.
Yes, yes. We came in today and I had the correct answer, so.
Oh, good.
Felt like I won the lottery. The uh, other speeding stuff we talked about, Upper Hall a lot, really have, we'll have a change there, uh, to the um engineering firms. You know, I'm sure it's, it's in a line of things that they're doing, so um, I'll wait to hear back from Chris on that, um, I can bug him again soon. You know, I'm sure it's, it's in a line of things that they're doing, so, um, I'll wait to hear back from Chris on that. Um, I can bug him again soon. And then, short-term rental stuff, we are up to thirty, it's thirty, this says thirty-three, thirty-five, um, registrations. And, um, final round, the letters have gone out and, um, we definitely feel that there's probably upwards of maybe as many as two dozen more that just have, that haven't registered for one reason or another. And there's also probably at this point about ten, um, that have kind of deactivated their listings and, you know, for one reason, like, one reason or another, it's, it's used as a cottage for a kid, and, you know, where it's just not, it's not triggering the, um, the requirement anymore.
It's interesting, cause it's a little bit less than we were thinking it might be originally than we were guessing.
Yeah, I think if the, if, if the twenty more units on the, on the thirty-five, yeah, yeah, I think it's in that, you know, fifty to sixty range. And I, you know, and I think we can, um.
It could be a hundred before.
Yeah, that, I know, that's, I thought what they were saying, that it could be upwards seventy to a hundred.
And that's a. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of, so that, I'm saying fifteen to twenty, you know, that, I could be really wrong on that. I think we've, like, that's just looking at the, the, um, software, which just lists all the stuff.
That's why it's so great to have it, because you've got.
Oh, it's, it's been really helpful, because I've had a couple of conversations where, you know, I'm not renting it and I go, well, I could book it tomorrow night. And they go, wait, what? And it, you know, we're able to get compliance because we have the, we've got that, that information. And, and also there's, it's a little bit slow, but we've got a spreadsheet, we input to the spreadsheet, we send it to the, to Deckard and then they actually do a little bit of updating of their database with our information to where it, it, um, it shows the ones that have registered and then, um, if they have, if they're gonna have to be removed, because if they're not, it's not, it's not, it doesn't trigger the requirement, then they kinda come off altogether. So then that, it's kind of a fluid process that, um, has been happening, so. We'll see where, where it all ends up. And it's, we're, we're not doing a date certain, um, it's just a rolling, when somebody, when somebody registers, they're good for a year from that day. Cause we, you know, to try to do an April first and have
Yeah.
a hundred of these things come in at once, it, um, and, and it seems like the way that it, people manages it, manage it rather, that it, it just is unique and everybody's in a different situation, so. Some people are going, are saying, well, I'm gonna rent it for ten days and then not for a year. What should I do? And it's like, well, you know, when you feel that you're going over the fourteen, that's when you should register, so.
Yeah.
If you're not gonna trigger it, there's no need to, to register if it's not gonna, if it's not gonna be used that way for a year, so. Yeah, and that's all the old business. Move on to, um, finance. You guys are good with that or?
Yeah, we can.
Anything else? Okay. Delinquent taxes here over the year, you can see if there are a little bit more, which is, um, just something to note. As far as fiscal twenty-five, we're kind of right at the benchmark. We're halfway through the year and we're about halfway expended. And this is when you back out all the crazy, um, expense lines from the FEMA buyout and the bond expense for the construction of the office and all that stuff. So we're kind of right on track expense-wise. And, uh, bonds, so we've been, with the bond, um, reimbursement process is actually very efficient and works really well, so we've been able to, um, you know, like this, this next invoice we will pay next week, we'll have this one and the previous one that we can then package up and then get a reimbursement pretty quickly. So it's, it is not stressing out cash flow, um, at least not right now. Yeah, and then all the fund balance stuff is the same.
Yeah, when we're looking at the ARPA funds, so then how much, how much have we, so we've already used some ARPA funds for some of the consulting fees, so then what would we be down to if we use that for?
Can we do the math, cause it's.
Whittenburg.
Just.
We threw this call back twenty.
Two twenty. Right, they were twenty-three thousand max.
Just trying to reestablish how I got the, so the, the five eighty-two down to the two forty-two is one seventy-five for the East Dorset Town Office redevelopment. We have one twenty-five reserved for solar panels for the new town office and then it was forty for the, um, Raptor Lane feasibility study. And then that gets you to.
And that was the end and?
Yep.
So forty-five. So that, now we're down to two forty-two and then, um, what was Whittenburg again? What was the?
It was a max of, max of twenty-two or twenty-three, yeah. And they're gonna do an hourly rate and, uh, you know, they're, um, they're so, they're busy, so I think if they, they feel that they can get through it more efficiently, then obviously we'll have less hours.
Right, and then we have to do one more study, which is the extra environmental one.
If you, yeah, so I think, so if we get through the Whittenburg review, um, and then, you know, that checks out with kinda the process so far, then, yeah, one of the next things to do would be the, um, environmental, um, review, uh, which is around seventeen thousand.
Seventeen?
Yep.
So then we still have, we still have.
So if you add the twenty-three to the seventeen, that's another forty, so you still have about two oh two left.
Right, which is good.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's all I got.
Anybody have any questions?
I move, we accept the finance report as presented.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna talk about things that I didn't talk about. Highway stuff, um, we'll try to get our truck back. Um, we've made an insurance claim, uh, for the other stolen items. A lot of the stuff is older, tools and equipment, um, and the estimate for that's probably five to seven thousand dollars, somewhere in there. And what else?
So is that replacement insurance?
Yeah, so we have, uh, it's insurance for contents.
You're gonna have to spend a lot more than what we actually get for the claim to replace those tools?
I don't, I, I don't have numbers on them all yet. I just have kinda like, here's the stuff, um, and just in the rough.
It could be replacement cause of insurance.
No, it is, it's guaranteed, guaranteed replacement.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's good.
And I'm not, I think, I'm not sure what the deductible is, but it's, they did say for the, for the truck and the stuff would be one deductible, so.
Should we be thinking about putting cameras?
Treated as one claim. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see what I can do for research about it. It's not inexpensive, but, um, and I'm not su- you know, we def- we definitely should look at it, yeah.
Same for the new, new town office.
New town office is, yep, gonna be a little, like a Christmas tree, so it's, it's already factored in. Um, we've got, um, I think the Royal Group is gonna be doing all that, all that stuff, so that's all it's gonna have. We're gonna have key, um, key entry, um, key card entry to the two main doors. And then, I think it's four or five cameras on the, on the circumference of the building, so. Parking lot, two, two, three at the parking lot, I think, and then two on the back. And that'll, um, yeah, it's a, it's a little different, but it is up in the woods, so.
Is it, um, it's gonna sound like a kooky idea, but is there a way to put some sort of an after-hours gate at the foot of Raptor Lane? I mean, not if we're doing a housing project or something like that, but still just temporarily, just to keep trucks from.
You mean for, like, as the construction's happening or?
No, I meant like later on, cause you've got your car key, um, key card to get into the building, but if you wanna keep people from driving a truck up and
Yeah.
breaking in and unloading.
Yeah, I think it's difficult because of the access to the town forest, um, where it would be.
Cause people aren't really there.
In theory, they're not, they're not supposed to be there in the dark.
I mean, I guess in the summertime.
Yeah, the hours may, may differ. But no, it's not a, I mean, it's something you could look at, because it is so remote, it's kinda, you know, it's not right next to, you can't see it from the road, so it makes it.
Right.
Kinda awkward in that, in that respect, but we can look at a couple of cameras for the, um, the facility down here.
And motion detectors and things like that.
Trail camera.
Yeah, we'll be seeing a lot of bear.
Right, exactly.
I, we do.
They do get bears.
We've got exterior lights that are on sensors, I think, already, um, stuff like that. You know, it's a pretty tight building. There's really only two, two main doors. One, there's, uh, two, there's a door not lockable and then there's a, a deadbolt keypad, which is the main entrance. And then everything else is garage doors. So.
There's not a lot of value, valuable stuff in it.
In?
In the building, is there?
In the highway stuff or in the?
No, 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 in the office.
Yeah, I mean, it would just be the vault stuff, right? It's kind of almost invaluable, but it's in a locked.
But that's totally locked.
Yeah, that's. So it would just be, yeah, just the office contents?
Ocean's Eleven, right?
We should have a bigger wall with the truck in it.
We do have a Claude Dern, that's.
Well, that's blocks to that historical.
I thought it was ours.
That's what I thought too, but they put claim on.
Oh, geez, maybe, maybe we should challenge it.
I know.
It's been here a really long time.
Let's put it this way, the Historic Society wants to have things hanging in the town office, so it's.
Yeah, we're gonna have plenty of wall space. Um, let's see, other stuff, the Fire District, um, yield tested their well last week. They did what's called this, um, step test and they monitor neighboring wells for, they call it interference. Basically, there was, as far as I understand, no issues with neighboring wells. And the, the gravel well that the district is, has built, um, pumped it, it was over a hundred and fifty gallons a minute. So now the water quality tests will take about four to six weeks, so by the end of January, um, they should have a pretty good understanding of, um, you know, that, that what they're hoping is gonna work out, that they'll have a, you know, a new source that doesn't need a ton of treatment, uh, probably, hopefully just needs chlorination. And then they can try to figure out a, a timeframe to build a little treatment building, um, to get the permits, obviously, build a treatment bur- building and then as part of the project that they've already done, um, the pipe, the, most of the pipe to the street is already in the ground. So it's just, it's just a treatment building, um, equipment and then connecting the well to the pipe that's already in the ground. So the hope is, of all hopes, that by next, um, sometime late next year, um, the district will get off of the moratorium.
And can you remind me where exactly is the location of this well? Cause this was like their third.
Chaney Road, it's on the same location, uh, off of Chaney Road.
So kinda behind what was, it was Malcolm's property, right?
Yep, yep.
And it's just back there.
Yep, it's behind, it's back behind there.
But it's still on this side of Prentice Pond.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, and it's, all the wells are on the same, are, they're all within fifty feet of each other. And they're just different depths. And the gravel well, the new, the new one, the well casing itself is like over two feet wide. And then, uh, it's, it's shallower. It's like forty-five feet deep. So, and it's, it's pretty impressive to use.
Did that surprise you? A hundred and fifty gallons?
It's a, yeah, it's a lot more than, that's a lot more than what we thought, because it's a, the hundred and fifty, ha- like, the way that that pencil's at, it could do more than that, but it has to do that and not impact other stuff. And it has to be able to recharge, um, at a certain, um, rate essentially, so that we can prove to the state, hey, we can take this much water out of here continuously with no issues.
Forever.
Yeah, exactly. And that's, that's what that test is meant to, to do. And there's, there's two parts of it, it's the yield and then the quality, so, and both, at this point, seem really good, so.
I mean, the demand of the whole system is half of that.
In theory, it's even less than that, but, yeah, right, so right, right now, um, the system uses like, uh, seventy-five to ninety-five thousand gallons a day. This would.
A day.
A day. Yeah, East Dorset probably uses just a third of that. It's actually maybe less, it's crazy, but, um, uh, this would, it would potentially be two and a half times, um, the.
Crazy amount of water.
The need, um, which is, which is good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or allow for, cause right now, there's a lot of things that are in stasis where people wanna redevelop, wanna change from commercial to residential or vice versa, and it just, to not have the allocation to be able to accommodate that, um, right now is really just kinda silly. It's not, you know, we, we don't have people who are looking to build, you know, shopping malls. We're just talking about somebody that wants to just turn, um, you know, cottage into something a little bit bigger, um, which is.
Does this enable the fire hydrants?
Nope. The fire hydrants, it's not a quantity, it is a, um, it is a hydraulic, um, capacity thing with the pipes that exist. And, um, the quantity certainly matters, it certainly helps. But, uh, the, the fire hydrant thing, essentially, if they, if they replace the main on Church Street and then replace the main on, um, thirty and then add a tank, then they could get all the hydrants red. And they could, that's, doing that, um, is like a, uh, it's probably half as expensive as replacing just all the main with a bigger pipe. So those are the two options. Like, you could upsize the, the pipe everywhere and not add a tank and then get, and get greater pressures. Or you can upsize two pipes, add a tank and actually get a bit more pressure, according to the study that they did a couple of years ago. Just another couple of million dollars at all.
Yeah.
Can you hear that hollering?
Yes.
That's the pellet truck.
Oh, yeah, he's filling.
Is what he's filling up?
Yep.
I just got a message.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, not the best time of night for that.
Yeah.
Let's see, everything else we pretty much have talked about.
And we were also just gonna mention that Liz is stepping in, so we're going to, um, you all got the email, but Liz? And, um, so we need to find someone to run, um, for office, so if anybody knows anyone, encourage them, cause they would have to have a petition in by January twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Do they have any signatures?
Rob? You sent out your December newsletter. Is this something that would be appropriate to allow for something like that?
Yeah, yep, for sure.
Right? And places that you post things, right? The post offices, the general stores, aren't there, aren't there some areas?
Yep. Yeah, we can put up a one pager that says something, you know, about the, the expected vacancy.
Yeah. Please. It being Christmas, it's good to spread the word too, cause a lot of people just may miss some of that stuff.
Yeah.
What were you saying, Sandy? How many signatures?
Twenty.
Twenty. Yeah, so the signatures is easier.
Really need seventeen, but shoot for twenty, cause somebody will sign that's not registered.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
No warrants?
You know, did we?
I signed them today, but they're on your desk.
Yeah, they must be on my desk. You got them? I think they're on Nancy's desk.
I put them on your desk.
Finally. Almost forget something. Guess I'll try to set something up with. Let's throw them on Frank's.
Ooh, yeah. Finals.
Oh, yeah, finals.
Perps, devs.
Yes.
Um, I was going through this, um, memo that Jim Barlow wrote about the things we would have to put onto the ballot, and is this something we would be wanting to put on for this town meeting, or next?
Next, is the way Jim has explained it. For the, for the head clerk position?
Right.
Because the term expires in twenty-six.
March, so what usually, what normally happens is when I, when I design on December thirty-first, you can appoint her to fill my position.
Temporarily.
Until, until her term.
Yeah, that's what Jim was...
And then, in March, she will run.
Or we can change it to, but that's a, we do.
But that, that's what I was gonna ask, because if that's something that we're thinking of doing, it's...
Then that has to be voted on.
Position, it has to be voted on, so that would have to be on the ballot, but...
Do we...
Because when I read through this, I wasn't quite sure what he was recommending, if it should be something about appointing this year or next year.
Would we expect anybody to have any issues when they're moving into an appointment?
I would, I would.
Well, the clerk sits outside of the, all other staff members, and gets treated differently, and it's the only one. It gives the board authority over, basically, what, you know, the department, kind of like every other department. We could go into a whole list of reasons to do it or not do it, I guess, if you want, but we're not, but Jim is saying with the sequencing of when Sandy's retiring, that, I think he was saying, he was recommending to vote on it in twenty-six.
Mm-hmm, okay.
At the time when the clerk, um, uh, term expires.
Yep, because, I mean, it makes a lot of sense, I think, but I could certainly see people who want to be considered for a position, maybe not wanting us to have the authority to appoint, but...
Yeah, but, and you've, you know, I mean...
I will say that I've been very lucky that the boards that we've had here have been very easy to work with, but clerk history has shown that when a new board comes on, the clerk goes, there's problems.
Well, on the other side of that is that there's clerks that you can't get to do anything, because they're...
They're elected, and they don't have any...
They can do whatever the heck they want. And they literally don't even open their office.
Well, that's, you know, I guess my, my concern has always been that it's a really important job to have somebody, you, you get elected with absolutely having no clue how to do it.
Right, no experience.
And no interest in doing it, really, but...
Yeah.
But there's no way you could actually walk into a clerk's position without having any experience.
But somebody could get elected to do that.
Well, it happens, yeah.
Yeah, but...
It happens. With the appointed process.
I mean, just like Jen, Jen's worried somebody's gonna run against her, I'm like, there's no way, I mean, by then, she's gonna be Vermont certified, she'll have her CMC, which is her certi, certified municipal clerk certificate from the International Institute.
But it could be a popularity contest to get elected, I mean...
Yeah.
Well, no, that's exactly right, that's the thing about people running for office.
And you could invest in the assistant, right, to, to be the next clerk, and then somebody could run against them, and then you, all the money you've invested in that employee, you're going, if they lose, right, so that's kind of the other, the other side of it. So, I, we have time to debate it, for sure, for sure.
But I thought, just, I just wanna make sure we know which year, because I went through this a couple of times, but between all the dates they kept talking about, I can get your head all turned around.
Well, the reason I, yeah, the reason it was brought up was to try to, like, if we're gonna have to do it for
Right.
twenty-five, we should be talking about it now.
We should be talking about it.
And then she would run for a one-year term.
Yeah, but with the sequence of what, um, Barlow is saying, it's based on what we're gonna do, it's, um, he's saying, just vote on, um, vote on it in twenty-six.
Okay, good.
But like, I'd never focused before on things like, I didn't realize that, you know, so many judges are elected. And I'm like, what the heck, I mean, you know?
No legal background.
I can get elected to be a judge, I mean...
So, can I just ask, so if he's saying that it would be voted on for twenty-six, so when she would run in twenty-six, she would only run for...
She wouldn't run, there would be nobody running.
But what if it fails?
Right.
She has, she has, I, I think, I think she'd have to run for one year, and you'd have to vote, vote it in, just like when we, then you'd have to vote, and if it passed...
We're not gonna read his memo, because...
And if it passed, then the following year, it's just like when we got rid of the town, the town tax collector.
Yes, if it fails.
We had to do that one-year transition, and I think that's what you'd have to do with the clerk, because if the position failed, you'd be without a clerk.
Well, and I also thought, and again, because I, I read this like four or five times, and I, and I wasn't quite sure, one of the questions that I had was, should we be voting this year on giving the select board the authority to appoint, and then your term finishes, and then we can appoint, which means we can't wait until next year for that.
We would, yeah.
That, that part might have to be on the ballot this year, and that's what I wanna pin down.
That was what I was intending to ask Jim, and I don't know, maybe, maybe I didn't ask it correctly.
Yeah.
That, that makes sense.
Right, it still seems a little bit unclear to me, and it seems like maybe we have to have that put on the ballot this year, that it's going to turn over to the authority of the select board to appoint, um, which would make sense to me.
Beginning March twenties.
Yeah, with the date certain.
Yeah.
Right, but let's clarify that with Jim Barlow, because if we need to get it on the ballot, then, you know, we should be talking about it, making sure we understand it.
Something like shifting to an Australian ballot takes two years to, to do that, maybe, yeah, I don't...
And the fact is, is that you can't just assume it's gonna pass next year, have that, and then have her running at the same time, I don't, I don't know how that would work.
Yep.
But if it didn't pass in March of twenty-twenty-five, she got to March of twenty-twenty-six to, to do it again.
Correct, because your term is still, there's not someone up, so it may be in our interest to put that on the ballot this year.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, uh, yeah, makes sense.
Okay, um, all right, anything else?
I have one thing that I should have brought up earlier, and I would, I meant to mention to Rob, Rob. Dog licenses are going up by the state as of January one by two dollars, so the state will then get, um, seven dollars and for a non, and, and we get six for a neutered or spayed dog, so the dog's gonna go from eleven to thirteen. And then a, a non-neuter dog is gonna go from fifteen to seventeen. I'm asking if we shouldn't consider raising our rates as well, and make it fifteen and twenty, just for, otherwise, we're gonna develop a lot of ones, and then office will help. And we haven't raised ours, we have not raised ours since I've been here, and the state's gone up twice in the last twenty years. So I just think it's something we can consider.
So it would be fifteen for neutered, twenty for non-neuter?
What are other accounts to, just care?
I called Manchester, Manchester's already higher than us, um, and then, then, if you're one day late in Manchester, it's twenty-five dollars per dog, and then, and then if you're thirty days late, it goes up, and it goes up, and up, and up, and then if you haven't licensed it in a year, and you come back to the company to license it, you have to pay for the year you missed, plus the year you're licensed, so they're really strict. Um, we've been very lax, we, we never charge late fees. I'm just grateful that they come in and license the dog.
Right, exactly. Well, I think it sounds pretty reasonable to me.
So it's up to you, we could go to, so right now, we get six and ten for, six for spayed and neutered, and ten for non, and the state gets five, and they're gonna go to seven, so it's gonna go from eleven to thirteen, and fifteen to seventeen. So it's up to you to decide.
So instead of thirteen and seventeen, it would be fifteen and twenty?
Fifteen and twenty.
Go for it.
Yeah, I said go for it.
Good, Mary.
And that makes it like much easier.
Much easier.
Do we need to, and...
Set them on that, or? What were the numbers, sorry?
Fifteen and twenty.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we didn't have it on the agenda as an action item, but...
So move, new guests.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Because I have to program the, look for them, the licenses start coming next week. Okay, anything else, Gus? Motion to adjourn, second, I heard it.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.